Good evening and welcome to, I would normally call this the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, February 26th, but obviously this isn't quite a regular meeting, it's a little bit different. So, welcome everyone, and with that, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I appreciate being here tonight, and you know I feel like saying the verse of victory in Jesus, because we, the city, has stood for 100 years and we're here to celebrate that wonderful, those 100 years. And I've had the privilege of having my home here for 45 years. So you know God's been good to me, he's been good to the city, he's been good to all of us, and we need to honor him tonight. So I want to thank you, Father in heaven, for your great love and your favor upon this city throughout all the years. We do want to thank you, our Lord, for the many people that have served this city from its beginning till now. For all the council people, men and women, for all of the police department men that have served us throughout all the years, the fire department, everyone that's had a part in helping to grow this city to where it's at today. And we thank you for our present council. We ask you, Lord Jesus, to guide them and keep them and use their lives to further the cause of this city and help it to continue to grow and even be, become more and more a city of peace and joy and happiness. We love you this evening, we want to give you praise for all things. Thank you again for the privilege of the 45 years that I've been living in this city. We thank you, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Condit. Next, we will move to citizens' communications to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth and give your name for the record.
Came here in 1993, not quite as long as Reverend Condit, but it was a small enough city. But I gotta tell you, 100 years ago, I'll bet you the folks sitting up at the City Council table, probably not a dais-like, but a table probably, in the back of the saloon or wherever it was, had no idea what 2018 would bring. They were just struggling enough to give their fledgling city a place where the farmers could bring their crops, where businessmen could come on the train down through the valley from places like LA and Sacramento, and they became, they became the guiding light for what you have today. And hopefully, that guiding light has not diminished, that you will look at the decisions you make today because some of the decisions that they made in 1918 still are here with us today. So remember, in, gee, 2118, remember, some of the decisions that you make are going to affect how the people of Series live. And I hope, but I can't help it, I gotta laugh because you guys look like a rogues' gallery with all those top hats and everything. I told Mr. Jordan and Mr. Westbrook, "Yeah, I won't say, yeah, I will," and said, "They're dressed like pimps," you know, but they were a part of life. Back then, as in now, there are people who I call pimps, who are lobbyists in the government and all that, so hopefully none of you will be swayed by any of those people. But in all good humor, Darryl, you look great. And Tom, I like the hat. But anyway, just remember, today's decision may be tomorrow's regret, or it may be tomorrow's joy. So, like the Reverend said, ask the good Lord to guide you and keep your eye on reality. And thank you very much. I've been coming to this City Council since 1973. I see some of the old timers back there, like Andy and Stan, oh, I didn't do it, Ingrahamson. Some really people that I have come to respect and honor during these years, so I hope you stay in that bunch.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Thank you, my name is Harpreet Singh. First, I'd like to congratulate all the council members, mayors, and staff members, police chief, and all the people of City of Series for their 100 years of incorporation and just being surviving in these tough times, as everyone has seen the recession and I think up and downs of the economy, and I think that's quite an accomplishment, especially the Series, it just located in the Central Valley, and we are much more dependent on agriculture, and agriculture just goes up and down sometime. My point in being today at the council is, as I think some of you know, we are having the Sick American Awareness Event every year, so for this year, we would be having at our same Series Community Center. And so this year, topic, we are much more focusing on the Sikh and Hispanic community bonds, just talk about how the two communities have to struggle over the years, since over 100 years, either it's immigration or agriculture issues, discrimination, and how the community has shared the same values and just living in the United States, so that we can just increase the networking and different opportunities which both the communities can share together. So I would just like to invite all the council members, people of Series, we would have the invitations, if you need, we will just stay till the meeting, and we would like to have all of you at that event, so that we can just share our values together and just try to address different issues our communities has, and especially Mayor, I think you are much more busy in your time, so I would just request you to attend the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. With that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions, we have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the six consent calendar items, or I guess the presentation? So, any conflict of interest declarations? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like one of the six consent calendar items pulled for further discussion? Okay, anyone in the audience? Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to approve, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, ABC, and 6.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember DeRocette, a second by Vice Mayor Klein. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, we have none, we have no public hearings this evening, no new business discussion items. Is there anyone on the council that had anything that they would like to discuss at this time? Okay, with that, we will move on to presentations from the dignitaries, local government officials, organizations, and members of the public. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mayor Viera. Again, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, it's great to see so many faces in the audience. So first off, this evening, I want to recognize our Centennial Committee members and the efforts. So I'll give you a little background on a centennial committee that was formed by this council, directed the formation in 2016, the first meeting was held in December of 2016. The committee has met monthly, came up with a mission statement, so I do want to read this mission statement because it kind of forms the framework for what the committee has done over the past year. So the mission of the City of Series Centennial Committee is to commemorate and celebrate 100 great years of our city. Through planned events, activities, and commemorative products, the goal of our committee is to bring our citizens together to celebrate the birthday of our ever-growing community in which we live, work, and play. By encouraging City of Series residents and businesses to participate in this 100th birthday party, we will foster community partnerships and create civic pride. We are not only honoring the past and where our city has come from, but also focusing on the future and where it is going. It's time to say cheers to the last 100 years of our city and look forward to the next 100 years. So that's the framework that's been put together of the committee over the past year, lots of conversations to say how we're going to celebrate this 100 years of Series greatness. And so, we also came up with a slogan, City of Series Centennial, celebrating our community. We created a logo, which you've seen on all of our documentation, it's upstairs, as well as we'll be using that on all our letterhead for the full year, you'll see it on the screen above you. And the events, as well as other commemorative items such as coins, and we'll talk about those a little bit more in the future, as well as a creation of the purpose for fundraising activities for this year, which would be the Centennial Plaza, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute as well. So at this time, I would like to have, and these members don't know that I'm doing this, so I'd like to have each of the Centennial Committee members, please come forward, state your name, and then stay up here so we can have a photo op, so that you can be recognized for your efforts. So Sheila, you get to come first because you're the one that was driving this. If you're wondering why we're dressed up in the era, it was really Sheila's idea, and she pushed it, and she got participation, so thank you Sheila.
You're welcome.
So please.
Diane was a really big help with that also.
So if you can just please state your name and then stay up here so we can get a picture of all the committee members.
My name is Sheila Brant.
And my name is Lee Brant.
Paul Caruso.
Mr. Caruso is not mentioning the fact that he is the chairman of our committee, thank you, thank you Paul.
Big bucks.
Yes, he gets double the salary of everyone else.
Lisa Mantaro Moore.
Cheryl Trout.
Laura Aiken.
Sharon Caruso.
Brandi Meyer.
Keith Meyer.
Cooper Condit.
There are several other members who were not able to be here this evening, but we wanted the community to get a picture of what the committee has made up and the cross-section of our community that it represents, and again, we are thankful for their efforts and look forward to the rest of this year, as we will continue to meet and planning the rest of our events, so.
Act like you like each other.
Have a round of applause for our committee members. So, as we kind of reached out and let people know that we were celebrating this year, we did receive a proclamation here from the office of the governor, so I'm going to go ahead and read that. So it's dated February 25th, so that's the actual date of our incorporation, February 25th, celebrating today. So, City of Series Centennial Celebration, congratulations to the City of Series on your centennial celebration of the 100-year journey that created one of Stanislaus County's premier cities. Named for the Roman goddess of agriculture and grain, who gave her people the gift of the harvest, Series is in one of the Central Valley's richest and most diverse agricultural areas and is the home of Stanislaus County Agricultural Center. The city's agricultural heritage, as well as cultural and recreational amenities, makes Series a diverse city that is loved by its residents. Community events and activities that occur throughout the year reflect upon the heritage and values which created and cultivated this wonderful community. I'm proud to recognize the achievements and history of the City of Series as you celebrate a century of community. Sincerely, Edmund G. Brown. So, we've got that, we'll obviously keep that for ourselves and post that prominently here in City Hall. This time, I'd like to have Lisa Montero Moore come up with the next presentations.
It's a privilege for me to be here tonight, one, to represent Assemblymember Adam Gray and Senator Anthony Canello, which Mr. Canello is also here, there, so. There's a lot of history in this room, and so I don't want that to go unnoticed, and I'm proud to be here, have served on this council, and be able to recognize our community tonight. So, on behalf of the California State Assembly and the Senate, there is a resolution that offers a little walk-in, really, and I'm not going to read all of it, but I will read the last portion. Resolved by Assemblymember Adam Gray and Senator Anthony Canello, that they congratulate the people of the City of Series as they celebrate the 100th anniversary of its incorporation, point with immense pride to the many fine opportunities provided to those individuals fortunate enough to call Series home, and extend best wishes for its continued growth and prosperity for the years to come. Members, Resolution Number 363. So this is a great honor, how do we do this?
Probably present it to the mayor, probably the best way.
And for the purpose of the next presentation, I have asked very recently retired Mr. Ryzen to make the next presentation.
All right, well, good evening. One of the most important partnerships is a partnership that occurs between Stanislaus County and its nine cities, and I've had the unique opportunity of retiring from both City Council for Series and retiring from the county as its chief executive officer. And it's been interesting to see both sides, and I'm more convinced than ever that it's only by working together and creating and forging strong partnerships that we can make this a better community. And so I want to, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Chairman Jim DiMartini, Kristen Olson, Vito Chiesa, Dick Monteth, and Terry Withrow, want to provide their commendation to the City of Series on their year 100th anniversary.
So the next step of the recognition, again, I didn't warn these folks either, but for all our past elected officials that have served either on the Planning Commission or the City Council here for the City of Series, I would ask that you please come forward, state your name and your years of service, and then please stay up here so we can have a photo op as well. Mr. Ingrahamson, you get to go first, because I'm looking right at you.
I didn't do it. I did do it, I'm trying to remember how many years. I think Planning Commission, City Council, and Mayor is probably about 17 and a half years here, and then the four and a half on the school board. Somebody should have warned me about that job. But it was, it was a great honor serving in here, and it's great to be back and celebrate our 100th year as a city. Thank you very much.
Stay up here so you can get your picture. Come on, there's more elected officials out there, please come on up, we'd like to recognize you.
Okay, Stan Ryzen. I want to say one thing real quick, I was on Planning Commission 1986 to 1990, and then on City Council from 1990 to 2001. I got involved in public service because I was an Air Force brat, and my folks moved every three years whether we needed to or not. By the time I came to Series, I'd gone to nine different schools, three different junior highs, and I wanted a place that I could call home, a place that I could build a sense of community. And I'm proud to say I've been a Series resident now for 40 years, and very proud of this community, very proud and appreciative of the time I had to serve with so many of the great folks that are here today.
Paul Caruso, been here since end of 1961, went to Series High School, MJC, and on back. Had a chance to actually move into the city limits in 1987, so I decided to run for the City Council, which I won, from 87 to the end of, let's see, what would it be, 87, 91? Yeah, because I had to be sworn in the same month to the Board of Supervisors, I was there 14 years, and served with Stan and some of the others. It's been a delight to represent the City of Series and the outlining areas, I can't think of a better place to live, really. Raised a daughter, now we've got a granddaughter, she's in the Series Unified School District, so very happy to be here, appreciate it. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve on this steering committee for 100 years. And Shep, you're right, the decisions today are going to live with us a long time, so we appreciate it.
Did you want us just to say our name or give a speech?
I expected it, Eric, I knew this was going to happen.
I kind of started that, didn't I?
That's elected officials, that's your job, it never goes away.
My name is Blair Bradley, and I was on City Council here way back when. I started on the Substance Abuse Committee, and then I went to Parks and Rec, was on the Parks and Rec Committee for a while, and then I went from there to Planning Commission, and then from Planning Commission, I got talked into running for City Council. Oh, we won't blame anybody. But I promised I'd only serve two terms, which is what I did, two terms and then out, but I really enjoyed my time here. I was really surprised at the depth of staff knowledge, and I was surprised at the complexities of government. I did not know as a councilman that you had to serve on like 45 subcommittees and stuff. I wasn't aware of that, so I lost track of time, my family. Anyway, in the end, it all worked out, and I still feel sympathy for you, but I will never join you again.
Brian Garland, 14 years, City Council, Mayor. That's it, no speech.
Name's Sal Canello, I was a member of the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the first elected mayor of the City of Series from 82 to 92. That is 1992, not 1892.
Lisa Mantaro Moore, served from 2001 to 2005, and two years as a vice mayor.
Hello, Andy Constantino, City Councilman for six years, I don't know when it was, I was with Blair, Eric, and Stan. I worked for Paul Caruso, helped him get elected, I worked for Sal Canello, oh, and Lisa, I was with, so we're all going back to the same era. I got started, well, our family moved here in the 70s, 40 years ago, 41 years ago, bought a house on Moffitt, restored it, got into the Historical Society, 100 years. I was the first president of the Series Historical Society, and from the work I did there, I got Barbara Hinton, which is not here, asked me to get involved, so I did that for six years until I moved out of the district. I'm not far, so anybody need any help, let me know. I'm going to make it short because I think we got a hungry crew over here, so, thank you.
All right, got everybody? All right, so if we have you come over here in front of the dais, we'll have the council stand up here on the dais, and so if we can.
Stand up on the dais?
Behind the dais, that way you guys will be in the background. If you could, please, if it's possible, if not, no big deal. Next, I'll ask Representative of the Series Chamber of Commerce to come forward for their presentation.
Hello, my name is Herman Bati, I'm the Vice President of Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of Chamber of Commerce, I'm here to present the Certificate of Recognition of Centennial.
Next, I'll ask Sheila Brant to come back up for another presentation.
This presentation is from Addie's Boutique, she's a small business here in Series. Shella Joyner is ill this evening, so she asked for me to present this to the city. It's a plaque that she made from her business. Thank you.
It's the last opportunity we have from the, now is any time for any public comments, if anyone wants to open that up, their opportunity for the rest of the public to speak to the issues or ideas, and then we'll finish up with one more.
Go ahead, stand up, I'm not going to be long, I promise. I just want to thank you guys, you look terrific, you know, and, because I have this, and I've been wearing this for a couple of times, and I've been pointed at, laughed at, and all this stuff, and people wonder what I'm doing, now they know, and I want to thank you guys for participating.
Series is, in many ways, a very lucky place. My will ask, don't come to the next meeting dressed like this, I'm sorry, but it makes me feel like a little kid watching the big wigs up there, you know, and when are they going to hand out the candy? Oh, well, we had cake, but, no, seriously though, tonight's a special occasion because they're kicking off the celebration, but every City Council meeting, every one, is a special occasion because you have the ability to guide the destiny.
have the ability to guide the destiny of this community. And I think you need to remember that grand old man, Adrian Condit's words, when he talks about this city and about its people. I think that there is wisdom there for all of you and all of us.
So as I mentioned, this is the illustration of the Centennial Plaza, and this is the goal of the fundraising efforts for this year, to be able to support the installation of this. And this goes right on the corner, right out here in front of the community center, so right on the corner of Fourth and Magnolia. This will be installed, and there's sponsorship opportunities. So the bricks on the, we'll call it the ground floor, will be going for $100. And then on the seat wall or the face of the seat, those will be $250, and the center brick areas would be $500. So this is what the efforts of the activities that we have this year of the fundraising are raising the money for the installation of this, what we're calling the Centennial Plaza. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. In addition, we've got some of the hats and coins as well, so please see Lisa or any of the committee members, and you can see some of those. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to councilmember referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like and have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move to reports. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the committee and staff, and probably especially all of the former elected officials for being here this evening. Your fingerprints are all over our community. We just happen to be here when it's 100 years, but we understand that without, you know, you blazing the trails ahead of us, Series wouldn't be what it is today. So this is as much about what you did as us being up here and wearing these costumes. But I do want to let you know, thank you very much, and I appreciate it, at least from my perspective. You were always somebody that we looked up to, and so when you look around the city again and you see the improvements and the quality of the things that we have, don't lose sight that you were very, very much a part of that, and I want to thank you for it. So with that, councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
I'd just like to echo exact words. Thank you guys for being here. You know, I know each and every one of you, and it's been a pleasure knowing you, and you were before us, but like the mayor said, your footprint and your handprints and everything to do with this city is all over it, and we thank you for that. And it's been an honor to serve this city even after you, but it was an honor having you serve for us too.
Councilmember Drossit?
Nothing. I was going to say, Eric? Shh. No talking. Yeah, the hat doesn't fit, if you guys can't tell.
All right. Ms. Dean? Mr. Wells?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Westbrook? Darrell? Mr. Smith? Wow, everybody's got their tongue. Supervisor DiMartini?
I have nothing. Sorry I was late.
No problem. Okay. I think I got everyone out there. I'm not going to call on all the elected officials because I want to be home at a decent hour or so. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on Monday, March 12th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Stay here. Stay here.